Alright, so first we're gonna open up the public hearing for the Overwatch Foundation Cybersecurity Grant. So the Overwatch Foundation was founded in two thousand and twenty-two. It is a five oh one C three not-for-profit foundation that delivers grant-based services in cybersecurity, critical systems, modernization, network and physical defense, training and workforce development to state and local government organizations in New Hampshire and across the nation. Uh, the town of Woodstock was fortunate to receive a grant in the amount of up to thirty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty cents for the wastewater facility. So we will open the public questions. On that grant, if anybody has any on the side of that?
What will it physically be? With this financing?
What they did is they came in and assessed the plant as far as cybersecurity, um wifi and any way of getting in. And they actually installed, um, all kinds of software, computers and stuff that uh prevent anybody from being able to get into any of our systems.
To hack to.
So it's so we can't be hacked and.
Oh, so it's nothing physical, it's nothing on the property?
No, not pumps or equipment like that. It's all technical.
Technology based.
Yep.
Any other questions? Then we will close the public hearing on the Overwatch Foundation Cybersecurity Grant. And we will now open the public hearing on the our pro funding. Um, we received through the Grafton County, Grafton County's um pool of American Rescue Funds, um nineteen thousand, forty-six dollars that we will be applying to the Moore Street Water Main relocation. Um, when we get that project started. And so this public hearing was just for us to accept and apply that funding. Any questions or comments on that? Being none, I will close the hearing on that. And I will officially call the board of selectmen's meeting um to order at five oh two P M. Um, it was announced at the last meeting on March twenty-fifth that morning, um, that uh based on town attorney's um advice that we were to you folks that signed on via Zoom were to um assign a name to themselves. So it couldn't be iPhone four or Android or this or that, just as anybody that comes to a meeting in public has to sign a clipboard. And so, um, it was questioned whether um that actually had to be the case of an individual just signing on to listen. Um, and so we went back to the town attorney. And um, they let us let us know that there is no law that exempts participants from being required to identify themselves. Um, the town attorney stated again that it's just another way to attend and participate in a meet in a meeting. And so as best practice, um, and to make it uniform, as we do you folks having to sign in, those folks have to sign in as well. Um, the town attorney also said that they're seeing a shift from people not allowing more access or participation to meetings that they're just recording them and then putting them up on the web for users to um to watch at a later date. Certainly not something we're looking or considering right now, but um may happen in the future if we have things or challenges from that. So, um. We appreciate everybody understanding that. And now we're gonna get going on the rest of this evening's agenda. Um, first up, we have Zach. The new here from uh Woodstock with a Mean Street warming of Eric question.
Yeah, I don't really want to dwell on what's coming down, but um.
Yeah.
Did you guys ever have any sort of after-action with plan uh review on that water main break?
Yeah, there was a meeting afterwards with Mike Welch, Scott Rice, and Wade on the Water, our service contractor, to discuss, you know, what went on and, you know, things that may need to be adjusted or corrected for next time and.
Yeah?
Yep.
Uh, did you take any input from all of your employees that were there that night? And that's a big part of an after-action review is everybody that they are being involved.
Uh, well, let's speak Scott speak to that since Scott was in attendance to that meeting. Scott, would you be able to speak to that? Uh, you gotta unmute, so.
Yeah, we did not. Perhaps it might have been a good idea, but um we did come up with a lot of solutions on how to make things better for sure. Uh, and I think we'd gotten Mike had gotten some input from the guys before we had that meeting too, for sure. So, um, I'd like to think we got a lot out of it, like how, you know, how to locate some of the mains and redo the map on Main Street and a lot of different things that we could have, should have, would have, and can do to make it better next time, for sure.
Hi, yeah, and I know run anytime you do something like that, you're gonna run into issues that are unpredictable, which is uh not a big deal. Have you guys thought about maybe offering some formal education to everybody on the public works group since they basically are part of the water department when it comes to um specific classes toward, you know, towards water and distribution and stuff like that?
And running the water system?
Uh, well, the operating, I mean technically, technically, you know, the whole public works crew are non-licensed water operators. They're doing the work out there in the dishes and stuff. And I feel that even though that we subcontract out to Wade in the water.
Yeah.
I'm sure how many uh people from Wade in the water were there that night? Probably one to oversee something. So you got all these other guys doing the work with no formal education and uh, you know, when have you ever thought about offering them to get their water licenses if they wanted to pursue that? To have a more well-rounded public works crew since, I mean, I may be wrong, but what I've read and kind of how the contract goes, it seems kind of like the public works crew operates the water system for the most part.
There.
They tend to be day to day.
As far as training, uh, uh, this is like, this is like that. Um, they're not required for to know testing or any of that. They're just doing the physical repairs to it. Um, I don't know um how that connects with all of a sudden going to get their water license. You know what I'm saying? I don't understand.
Yeah, I was gonna say what anybody could get a water license.
As far as the repair that not, it wasn't just public works. There was also the construction company that was there with two guys. They had two guys that were in the ditch also went on that.
Yeah.
But as far as where he's going, I'm not sure that's where he's going with it, but.
I mean, one person talking.
Let me finish my thought here if I can. Um, but I don't understand the connection between doing the physical repair and all of a sudden going to uh school to get your license to be a um a water technician. I don't, where's that connection?
I mean, if you guys offered them to do classes and stuff like that, they'd have a lot better knowledge of how to do repairs when you run into these things that come up. And I'm saying this because I've gone to school for it and I wouldn't know half the stuff I know if I hadn't. There's a lot of stuff that Joe Blow Public Works guy isn't gonna know about a water system without attending these different classes. And I think it would be for the little investment. I'm, I mean, I'm sure you guys are part of Granite State Rural Water. That you guys have held the classes before. Um, it's not a lot of money to get some really good education through them. Um, New Hampshire Water Works Association is another good one. You could actually get your guys their um grade one license if they wanted to. I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't want to get your guys licensed since they're working on the water system, since they uh they do the rounds on the weekend for the water system. Um, I know through N H W W A, their classes are partially funded by D E S. Um, the class to go get your grade ones like fifty dollars. And then you might pay like a hundred or two hundred dollars in books, which if one person goes, you won't need to buy those books for the next people that go down the road. I mean, every once in a while you might, things change, but.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not saying that's a bad idea.
No.
And and it shouldn't be done. I'm just saying, I'm trying to figure out the connection between putting together, you know, a repair, a physical repair to a pipe.
Well, I'm talking about throughout the whole night with running into issues of gate valves. And if you were trained in uh your locate equipment, your leak detection equipment, you might have narrowed up that area that you had dug in. Um, and if they were licensed and they had a lot more knowledge about the water system, uh, they would know where gate valves are. They would know uh when you come to a left-hand turn gate valve or a right-hand turn gate valve, how you can tell the difference when you open and close it. I mean, it's all these little things that I I think would benefit the town for the small cost that it would be.
We'll look into it.
And I think that um.
So fair, fair request.
I think future circumstances like that would go smoother if everybody was more educated on the matter.
Yeah.
And then, and I'm not, I know there's been talk about it, but you know, down the road, if you have a whole crew of people that are certified and they're doing half the work now, do we really need a subcontractor down the road? You get, you got a three-man crew and they're all certified and when one person leaves, the next person that comes in, you get them certified. You're never gonna run out of an operator.
Yep. Certainly, certainly. And we we discussed it in the last couple of meetings that, you know, five years from now, when the contract comes up, we're in a hole. It's something that we can relook at.
And five years from now, you could, all three of your guys could be licensed at the appropriate level, no problem.
You'd have to have one.
Well, you could get a grade two in the next five. You can get a grade two in two years.
Yep. Well, we'll certainly, certainly um discuss it and look into what options there are. And I I took notes on the couple of businesses or the corporations that you mentioned to look into, so.
Is that one thing we did do after that? Uh, after that meeting is uh the guys are trained on that equipment now. The location equipment, things like that. So that is one uh one positive that came out of it.
By the looks, I just, I don't think that's true.
We're getting trained.
I think it's, it's, they're getting trained.
The equipment's here, their training has been, it's part of a grant.
Yeah.
It's part of a grant we received.
Yeah. Training is to occur.
Is to occur.
And I'm part of the V A S through E J P and we can also get some flash time through E J P as far as they're using the equipment also.
Great.
Just on a note of that equipment is, I just hope you guys don't take the class and don't use it because especially the listening device takes a lot of practice to get efficient with it. And even with the locating, locating is not just the equipment. You gotta know, have an idea already of where your stuff is to even be able to do a good job locating. And that's stuff that, you know, if you don't, you know, I know you're not gonna do it a lot here, but if you do, don't do it enough, you won't be good at it.
Good. Appreciate the input on that. Anything else?
Um, I do just have one thing that I was pretty disappointed in when I came to the last selectman's meeting. And then I was contacted by a town employee after that and um felt like I was lied to. And I don't know if you guys think that that's acceptable or not.
Okay. How, what do you mean by lied to?
Um, I was told that the state was requiring certain things and yeah, that was a lie. They weren't requiring the certain thing that I was told. And when I sat in the meeting that was at last, I was told that something got done. And then the other person I talked to said that it didn't get done. So either you guys are just telling people stuff without knowing or you're lying. I heard.
Or not lying.
Well, saying something that's false is, and knowingly saying it's false is lying.
Are are you just, are you talking about the fact that that the D O T engineer had recommended that we not use coal patch and that we paid?
No, no, I was told that the D O T engineer said that coal patch was not acceptable is what I was told.
I don't recall that piece exactly, but.
That was when I, that was when I got a phone call from one of your employees.
I can't speak to it. I'm afraid I wasn't at that meeting, but.
Well, I might be saying just.
In the end, uh, what?
Okay, well, you know, we'll circle back. We'll circle back to those meeting minutes and listen to the other.
Well, well, during the meeting, it was you guys told me that uh there were signs put out. And that never happened.
The state was supposed to take care of the sign.
Right.
And we were, I don't know, I didn't know. I was told that they were.
You guys told me that they put out signs and they weren't out anymore because they got ran over, thrown over the bank. And you can go back and listen to that meeting minutes if you want to, because that's exactly what was said.
I said, I think, okay, we'll certainly go back to.
So why would you say that if you just knew the state was supposed to put signs out?
I, maybe I misunderstood. If it was me you're talking about, Zach, maybe I misunderstood the conversation.
Yeah, you and Scott both said it, but.
I I think, I think what um what Mike had said was that uh the stadium was gonna be done in a couple of days. And I think the state, I, my impression was the state didn't put them out because they just get run over anyway. So I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, get pawed over.
We will certainly make sure to be more accurate with our words moving forward. It was no intention of lying. It was probably just a misrepresentation of what we thought was happening. So our apologies if that's how you felt was being, you were being lied to because that is not the case.
Okay. Well, I felt like I was being lied to with the, the, this um the state requiring it. So I would just be quiet and go away. That's how I felt when I was told that and then found out that that wasn't true. The state certainly will accept coal patch, but the the town.
It was advised not to.
The town, but what this guy that I talked to in the state said was that you, the town, was the one that said, should we do hot mix? And he said, well, of course, that's gonna be a better vex.
Well, I um, I don't think we're gonna get into, he said, she said, that one said, this one said. Um, certainly, i- if you want to, we can reach out to the the D O T engineer and bring him into a meeting. But I feel like at this point, it's it's past that point. We're gonna move on. We're gonna, we know we have to fix it again this spring. We're gonna put an R F P out later down the road for that pavement project that I think. Um, I don't know how much more we can say worse.
See why somebody from the public would be upset if they felt like they were lied to.
Okay.
I, now I don't.
I don't think.
Now, I don't feel like I'm gonna go to people to ask them questions if I'm gonna get lied to.
Okay.
And.
Well, I'm sorry you felt that way. Certainly not the intentions at work. Right, so. I guess we'll, we certainly need to get back to being more um firm about getting our facts and having someone come on to the agenda instead of allowing public comments that aren't on the agenda anymore.
I mean, you.
So that we don't get back into this vicious circle of saying, he said, she said, this, that, that.
You also just don't, if you don't know the answer, you don't get answered. You can say that and I, in my eyes, that's more than acceptable. You don't know an answer, you know, hell.
I think in that meeting, we were trying to settle what felt like um you were quite upset about. And so I think.
I mean, I wasn't upset. I was sick and tired of bouncing over all that had been over two weeks.
And it was getting fixed.
That's why I can't get through schedule.
Thank you.
I could try to do better about giving you guys better information also.
Okay.
Maybe you guys are going off, like I said, Jay was supposed to put out, at first they said some of cones, but with the snow, they're not gonna hold up. You can't put signs in the road because of plowing. You can't put signs on the sidewalk to block the sidewalk. Jay was gonna try and put a couple of signs in the snowbank right where the bump is so the hill drivers and I would know where the bump was um until it was repaired and they didn't follow through in any signage.
Okay.
And maybe you guys misunderstood when I said that there was both of them signed out, but they, they didn't get put out.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Awesome.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your input on the on the classes. So next up, we have to approve and sign the minutes from the March twenty-fifth meeting.
I'm making motion to skip the presentation.
Thank you. I will second that. All those in favor?
Alright.
I.
Scott.
Scott reassessing. Did I miss? Oh, I missed this one.
Yeah.
Um, so we need to re-vote on the February eleventh and February twenty-fifth meetings. Originally, on the February eleventh meeting, Scott had motioned to approve and sign the minutes from February eleventh and Gil seconded. The vote was in the affirmative. Gil, you were not present at that meeting, so we should have had a state abstained vote from you. So.
Scott, he can't second, so he can't even vote. So you guys better re-vote without me seconding.
Okay, so Scott, but Scott can second right now. Yeah, so I make a motion to approve and sign the minutes from February eleventh. Scott, do I have a second? Yes, thank you.
I'll take it.
All those in favor? I, all those that abstain. Yeah, right?
Oh.
Alright, okay, you abstain. Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
And then, um, the February twenty-fifth meeting minutes, Gil motioned to approve and sign the minutes. Scott seconded and the vote was affirmative. Um, Scott was not present at that meeting, so you should have abstained from that vote. So I make a motion to approve um and sign the minutes from the February twenty-fifth meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? I, those that abstain?
Abstain. Yeah.
Alright. Good?
If you have a copy of those again.
Oh, yeah. Let's sign them up. Let's sign them up. Let's sign them up. So then we make sure that we sign, or these, these are the.
Those, the other ones were signed correctly. It was just the vote that was.
Oh, this, okay.
Okay.
We can sign them. Alright. So now we have New Hampshire D O T right-of-way activities and permit for the sidewalk. So this agreement is activated.
Yes.
Yeah, to with the New Hampshire D O T and the town of Woodstock will be replacing, so whereas the town will be replacing the sidewalk adjacent to Route one twelve. Um, the town shall construct the project per the right-of-way activities for um per the permit from D O T. All work is so to share with the construction of these facilities will be of importance for the department specifications. So basically, we need to um motion to accept the municipal sidewalk agreement for New Hampshire one twelve sidewalk right-of-way activities permit, D O T R O W A zero 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 four four three.
That's from, that's from Moore Street to the Stone Bridge.
Okay, just that section.
That one section.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion. I'll second. All those in favor?
I.
Um, you just need one second, Travis?
Chat, was it?
Yeah, just a chat.
Um, next up, we have the tax dating preliminary report.
Um, yeah, this is just um the very beginning. So we start off with um, the notices will go out on four. We've sent courtesy letters, but the notices will go out on four eighteen.
Okay.
And then the process will begin from there.
Okay.
Not many.
No, no, just that thorn in our side there, the northeast, the dark car nose. They still haven't, there's like one time the association had kind of reached out, but that kind of fizzled off.
Yeah, because there's so much involved with it.
And no one can sell that either.
No, it was just in limbo trying to figure out who owns it.
Same goes for that one thirty-two Paradise Road, right?
That one we actually signed to take, it's kind of sitting there. Um, one of the the dean searched her. Yeah, really couldn't find anything, but then Laura started because we had to turn it over where she's deceased.
Right.
And she's gonna do some probate checking, but we've had her kind of busy.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll be back on that one.
Yeah. Okay. First one looked like they're just still wanting to make one commission.
You'll probably, you'll see all of those two yet a lot, probably.
Yeah. Okay. Um, next up, we have um donation request or submission. So we have a gift to the Woodstock Firefighter Fund in the amount of one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollar dollars from the T-shirt sales at the Woodstock Inn. Do I have a motion to accept?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, I'll second. All those in favor? I. And then we have a check request, I'd like to request a payment made to the American Agent Development Fund in the memory of um Rocky Jones for two hundred dollars from the Woodstock Firefighter Fund. That's a very good, very nice. Um, motion, looks very good. I'll second. All those in favor? I. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. Chief, thank you, the guys. Um, old other business brought forward.
Um, Scott, Scott can.
Kind of following here. Scott, did you vote on that to accept the?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Kathleen.
I was reading that.
So we have a Cascade Park usage form for what?
No, this is um under old business because you guys tabled it last time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For more information.
Yeah.
So the email and then he's got a part of this, which. The last day park is actually.
Oh, film and shoot a suspect. He got it like typed over.
Yeah, it could have been our scanner too.
Okay. That's the June. When was he reviewing? We also have one to three small pop-up tents for the equivalent for the shoe.
Need new backup tapes.
Um, if they're, if they're not for, this is a Tuesday. It's a Tuesday in the middle of the week.
Oh. Okay.
Um, it's like the college, like tops from down, college kids doing something.
So they're looking on June seventeenth. Um, I do see he's got a request in here until we have the the usage fee.
Cause he says they're college, they're college students working on a budget. So when people added. It's to do, he's been frail. They're filming and the journey of a hike.
What are your thoughts on a fifty percent as a like a lot nonprofit type?
That sounds good. Yeah.
As long as it, you're just going vertically all the way through, somebody say, well, I don't really, I don't really, but I guess.
We take it by case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I, I can agree with that.
I mean, they're college students reaching out. They're not.
Are they doing a reception somewhere afterwards? Is that a tough something?
No, 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 it's not.
We have nothing. Yeah.
They just wanna to film a few clips on Cascade Park.
I have them in there set. I know why you're getting confused because I had to scan them in separately. It wouldn't attach.
Ah.
Yeah, so if you go down to the next one.
So they're just looking to to film a little bit of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So I make a motion to accept their uh request for usage of Cascade Park um on June seventeenth. I would say if that date does not work, they need to come back to us. Like, there's no.
Bike return, bike return.
I don't know, honestly.
Just.
That's their problem.
Yeah, the parks not closed. And they have that, I guess, when you.
That's why they filled out this for, I had them fill out this form so they recognized.
Yeah, I think when you, when you communicate back to them that it's been accepted, you remind them in that same email that the park cannot and will not be closed.
That's what we do with all the weddings too.
Yeah, and that um the board has agreed to.
Additionally.
Fifty percent. Yep, so I make a motion to accept um the Cascade Park usage permit for um the rice, rice and mustard.
Back.
Um, and that the the board of selectmen are willing to reduce the usage fee by fifty percent, so a hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have a second?
No.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Great. Good. Any other um public participation on any of the agenda items this evening?
Are they, um, if Kathy posts those. Or records, the notice of that taxes, are they still required to be posted in public places?
No, you can do it under a right to know. You don't, we don't post them anymore, that, that's gone away.
That went away in the statutes.
But you can do a right-to-know request and get it.
I just wait for it to be recorded.
Recorded, and you, you're gonna start seeing the letter, the stuff coming. They'll start updating the meetings or whatever.
In London, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, are we going into non-public, there's a sort of.
No, that's non-public.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Okay, all right, so an entertaining motion to adjourn the public meeting at five thirty-one P M. All right, all those in favor, aye, and then we will go into a non-public session under RSA. Ninety-one dash A, home three, move two, A and C, we'll go into non-public, but we will not come back into public session after that.
Only to adjourn.
Only to adjourn that meeting. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight, appreciate it.
Have a good evening, Al.
You too.
You too, thank you.
See you next week.